...Tromsberg Planning Board to Boarder. It's March 22nd and it's a little bit after seven o'clock and we are in the Tromsberg Elementary School auditorium. First order of business is to do a roll call of attending members.
Jessica Giles.
Rick Geiger.
Anna Kargert.
Tom Aldrich.
Okay, I'll just, for the record, also note that we have Matt Johnston, Village Planner, here, and Guy Crowe, Village Attorney as well. Next item is whether there are any additions or deletions to the agenda.
None.
Okay, there being none, I'll move on. Have you all had a chance to look at the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes.
Any additions, corrections?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is that any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose and no opposition. All right, so we're here again. Just some quick reminders from me as to sort of where we are. Please remember, we are still in the information gathering stage, trying to get our minds around this application, its implications and so on. And that is a, as you know, multi-step process with a fair amount of give and take to just get a handle on things. So that's what we're involved in now. We're also going to be looking at some things tonight that are connected with the environmental review, which is really the thing that's going to be next up. We're going to hear from the developer, the applicant, as to their responses to our engineering input. And that, those are sort of the key things that are ahead of us for this evening. We will be having a public discretionary, public comment session again tonight, and that will be after most of the business, everything except for the old and new business. Okay, so, I think, who is leading the way on the information from the applicant? Okay.
Did I steal that microphone?
Yes. By the way, I apologize to the people in the audience for the even more than normal amount of disruption tonight. They were rehearsing The Lion King right up until before we got here, so things are a little bit more discombobulated than normal, and I apologize for that. I'll just go from here. Good evening. For the record, my name is Adam Walters. I'm an attorney of fellow title representing applicants in the 46 South Street project.
A little closer.
Is that better? Let me just take a minute to remind the board and everyone where we were last month. We had, as that meeting began a few days earlier, we had received the Village's Engineering Consultants' comment letter on its review of the application that was filed in December. That was, that consisted of 123 comments. The board also wanted to wait and get a little more information from some of the interested involved agencies that you would send the need agency packages to. So at that point, we had a little bit of a discussion, mostly about process led by the, again, the Village's Engineering Consultant and the board capable of matter. Since then, we have provided a submittal in response to the MRB comments, and I hope everybody has a copy. There are updated plans, as well as, we wanted to be very clear for the record as to how we were responding to each of those issues, so we included all 123 comments with responses from the team on each of the issues. We also included, the board had made a number of comments to us back at the January board meeting, so we included those as well as responses to those. And our goal, I think, for tonight is really to run through those. In the last month since we last met, we've also started receiving, we've also started receiving many comments and responses from those interested involved agencies. I know we have letters from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, from DBC, and from Tompkins County, which are, for the most part, the major other agencies involved. In the last month, the Village's traffic engineer completed its review of our traffic analysis. They did agree that there are no significant traffic impacts and that no mitigation is required. I'm sure Len's provided you with copies of that, and I understand we'll talk more about that when our traffic expert comes in.
Can you speak up, please?
Yeah.
A little closer.
Is that better?
That's best.
Keep it there.
I'll do my best. Thank you. And I understand we'll talk more about that. We'll be bringing our traffic expert next month for further discussion. In terms of our plan tonight, again, we just wanted to do a short presentation on the updated plans and the most recent submittal, answer any questions, and I understand the board will be considering formally declaring the date to see if the people are to see her and perhaps getting them in the public hearing. So with that, I'm going to ask Andy to come up from our engineering team and run through the details, and then we'll have a presentation from Ryan as well.
Good evening. This is a updated site plan that's in your packet. The visual is actually very poor, unfortunately, but the geometry of the layout from the original submission changed to more of a circular pattern with changes in building orientations in response to previous comments. My portion, I'll go through the changes to the drainage plans and the utilities portion, and then Ryan Kovak from Trail Vision Wolf will walk through some of the changes from the last submission, regardless of layout, buildings, setbacks and so forth. So from a stormwater standpoint, we were asked to prepare an urban center control plan that essentially is for temporary controls during construction. That just makes sure that while we're building out all the improvements, we don't track them out to the roadway, and we don't set sediment off of the site, making sure that we cover our stockpiles, have soaps up, and we control all of the temporary disturbances as part of the plan. So we provided an urban center control plan there. That also included construction staging, sequencing, areas where we can stockpile materials and so forth, and that will be reviewed by MRB's engineers, I would assume, prior to the next meeting. Other changes, we made grading modifications to the stormwater wetland. So we have two stormwater wetlands, and if the board wants to look on this board here, it's probably easier to see. This is the grading plan that we prepared. This is the larger stormwater wetland. In reaction to rotating buildings B and C, we elongated the wetland up to the north a bit. That allowed us to take the box culvert that was crossing the roadway and change the orientation and shorten it. We also went to eliminate the box culvert. We had utility crossings that we detailed, and then we added more details to the stormwater wetland. So where water comes in, you create these little four bays, which are little pockets that help sediment settle out. At the end of the practice, you put a micro pool that allows additional sediment to settle out. In the middle of the plan itself, you create these high and low marsh areas, which actually forms the constructed wetland, the six-inch low marsh areas where certain vegetation, that's water tolerant, will flourish, and then you have deeper marshes, which are eighteen inches deep. So we were asked to provide some additional grading detail for the wetlands. Spillways were also detailed and labeled. The smaller wetland that is actually over in the southeast corner, we added similar amounts of detail to that. We were asked to put more detail to the birotention filter that's below the multi-family building. We split it into two cells and allowed us to work out some of the details of the diversion structures, make sure we have cover around the pipes. We added detail with an overflow structure to the birotention filter and the hydrants that were requested by MRB. We also added more detail to a number of various small rain gardens that we're proposing throughout the site that would pick up runoff from some of the individual lots, some of the roofs from some of the buildings, and then the northern portion of the Loop Road added overflow structures. So it was really kind of providing an additional level of detail to the submission that we provided in December. The other changes that we made throughout the site plan in reaction to the other comments, which again were more making sure that we had separation between water and sewer, that more detail on how that structures and so forth, and updating our profiles, appearances, and then we submitted a revised drainage report, which added supplemental information that MRB's engineer, who deals with stormwater, asked us to put out. Turn it over to Ryan, will you answer any questions?
Once again, my name is Ryan Kovak from Charlotte Wolf Michael's Landscapeworks, we're consultants to INHS and Pallia Projects. Hopefully you know us by now. Just giving a broad overview again of changes that have been acted and really refinements that have been documented for the submission. Sorry, that's a slide I apologize. For those of you reading along. So as Andy had previously mentioned, one of the things that we have done in conjunction with the modifications to stormwater management that Andy just referred to, there are two buildings, I'm going to actually point to the board here, just so you know more yourself. There are two buildings, the largest lot, 12, which are standalone, a three-unit and a four-unit building. The four-unit building had been previously oriented, ninety degrees to the orientation, which it now has taken. What that allows to do is basically bring it closer to the roadway, eliminate some of the length of sidewalk it took to get to the front of that building, and really allowed us more space in the rear yard portion of those two structures to basically increase the overall size of the stormwater wetlands that are created and also reorganize and improve the orientation of the culvert that is connecting stormwater management practices in the northwest corner to that of the stormwater management practices on the inside of the Loop Road. Redone it, let's to refer to here. The other thing that that allowed, allowed us to do is that that actually, the rear yard portion of this four-unit structure is located in what is one of the lowest points of the site. So reorienting the building and bringing it closer to the roadway also allowed ourselves to minimize the amount of fill to more closely than make the existing topography in that Next is, there was previously a homogenous condition which all roadways, both private drives and the roadways proposed to be needed to become public, had a six-inch raised curb in all conditions. That has been revised to limit six-inch raised curb conditions, basically where stormwater is pitching towards, through the crown of the road, at the pitch of the road, towards the curb. So we're retaining them strategically now to basically facilitate the stormwater management that we know we need to do. But again, in taking away six-inch raised curbs in some portions, it's allowed us to minimize the amount of fill because it basically blooms out, it broadcasts further out into the site if you're raising six inches, or you no longer need to raise six inches, you're overall reducing the amount of fill. So again, trying to bend it more closely to the existing topography of the site. The total parking spaces provided, as documented in that current site, just to reiterate, is compliant with the existing zoning, which is to say that it's a two-to-one ratio. There are a total of 154 parking spaces. Four, 146 of those relate to residential, both market rate, affordable, portable rental, affordable for sale, et cetera. Eight of those relate to the nursery school parcel in this location. Of the entirety of 154 total spaces, there are seven which are ADA compliant. They are all broadcast throughout the site to serve different portions of the site, different buildings. So there's one here that can serve this cluster of affordable rental and for sale. There are two on the south side of the apartment building to serve the apartment building. There are two on the north side in this bar of the private drive, also to serve the apartment building. And then there are two additional to serve the nursery school. Of those seven, three of the seven as required by code are non-accessible spaces. So all striping, all spaces are dimensions. These are directly in response to comments received from MRB as part of their review comment package. Sidewalk connections, it was comment number nine of the hundred some odd, I've lost count of the original MRB group review comments, but there was a comment specifically that made note of having pedestrian facilities to get individual parking spaces, driveways to allow for, for people to basically park their car and walk to their front door. Previously, it was inconsistent in the plan where portable rental and portable for sale parcels had provided that, that connection, but some of the market rate parcels had not. They're now all consistently shown as having a direct sidewalk connection between the driveways and the parking areas and the front doors of the buildings themselves. Another direct response to comment number 18 from MRB Group related to the southwest portion of the public, the proposed public road. So in this location, prior, the prior iteration had the public road extending further to the south and kind of east, and so far they've been arcing toward. What's shown now is that it basically is driven by the minimum front requirement of lot number 11. So we minimized the public road to be basically the bare minimum of what it needs to be, and so pulling that back up towards the northwest. And as part of that also, we've truncated the sidewalk to basically terminate at the logical point, which is the last driveway that serves that same lot 11. As part of that, we did extend, and we're still waiting on direction from the board as to whether or not to include this moving forward, but we are currently showing an easement that would allow for the extension of said public road to neighboring parcels, should that be something in the future that's perceived as being desirable. At least that's what I found.
There was a revision to the nursery school driveway?
Sorry, yes, thank you. The nursery school, and I believe this was directly in response to a comment, I believe that came from John. Previously, the driveway had a point of entry egress that teed into the north side of the private drive at the south side of lot 11. What we've done now is a much more simplified loop condition where they both, both the point of entry and egress tie into the proposed public road on the northeast side of that roadway. So vegetation, now we're segueing from comments received in the MRB group package, review comments to those comments that were received from the board, I think in January, was it? So these are in direct response to some of the comments or questions that were received. The first was to quantify very literally the balance of trees that are being proposed, the alteration to existing, to proposed. And so there are 64 canopy trees currently. Hopefully it's self-evident by looking at the plan. In the proposed conditions, there's 317 canopy trees. This is taking a meadow and making it more into a forest condition or forested canopy position in the proposed condition, excuse me. There was another question with regards to no-mow lawn seed mix. So you referred to the landscaping plan that has been included as part of the December submission and revised in the subsequent submission that you've just received. There's a large portion of what is, precedes as front yard areas and really kind of the more of the public visible areas that are within the front yard setback and somewhat to the side yard setbacks, has been listed as no-mow lawn. It's really a sustainable alternative to conventional turf lawn, which is to say that it goes down as a seeded mix. It's a specific variety of fescues and other type of lawn turf seeds. So what it basically allows for is a minimal investment in ongoing maintenance. So whereas a typical conventional lawn in 1950 suburb is going to be mowed, you know, every week. I don't actually mow lawns since I was a kid. This, this lawn can go, you know, really twice a year if you wanted to. You could let it maintain, basically grows to a point of something in the round of eight to 10 inches long, six to 10 inches long, and it stops. It just naturally stops growing at this point. So unfortunately, the somewhat evocative and romantic egress images on the screen are all but un-eligible, I should say. But you do have packages in front of you, I see. So it's, you know, there's a certain aesthetic associated with it. There's, there's no concern, I would hope, with regards to perception of safety insofar that, you know, it's a very low-growing, consistent appearance, and, you know, it's not as high as a meadow, but it's not as tightly as a conventional lawn. It also is much less water-hungry than a conventional lawn, and so there's a sustainability aspect to that as well. So there were a number of questions, and I'll just go through these kind of one by one, again, in response to that December submission. Is there any designated public green space? So the entirety, we've said this and I'll just repeat it for the board's benefit, that the entirety of the INHS property is, albeit in private ownership, is being put forward, is being publicly accessible. As part of that, there is an extensive public sidewalk system, as well as sidewalk systems that basically connect the entirety of the site, viewed as, as open to the public and, you know, you have as much right to walk into it, if you live in the heart of the basin or not. In addition to that, there is a public amenity space that we've shown consistently now at the east end of the apartment complex. It is not defined in great detail, but it is not an insignificant area. It is actually quite a large area, which you envision as being a community gathering space. Are the buildings slab-on-grade? All the buildings that INHS will build, be they affordable rental or for sale, are slab-on-grade. The grading has been developed with all, including market rate buildings, being envisioned as being constructed as slab-on-grade. Certainly if a private owner purchases a parcel and chooses to go base from it, it's within their right to do so. But the grading is conservative insofar that it accounts for a slab-on-grade construction for all structures at this time. Nursery school included as part of that as well. Describe the stub driveways in the plan. So the stub driveways, in response to the zoning, it's a two-to-one ratio, right? So for every dwelling unit, there's a requirement that there's a facility for two cars to be parked, and the way that that's dealt with is varied throughout the plan, but the driveways in particular are a length which would allow for viewing of a, of a single owner or renter for that matter. So basically, pull one car in, they're approximately, excuse me, not approximately, they're 40 feet in length and eight feet in width. So they comply with the current zoning, and basically you pull your car, if you have a second car or someone visiting, you pull them in. Are the electric lines underground? Yes, they are. That's a wonderful thing from an aesthetic point of view. So all the utilities electric will be run underground, it won't go over the network. For both access roads by distances and lawn lines, hopefully you can read the screen, and I won't read through the entirety of this. What we provided you with, to hopefully be as transparent and to satisfy every inquiry with regards to the adjacencies of the existing neighboring properties relative to what's being proposed in both access drives, the public road on the west, the private driveway on the east. You've got a handout there with two 11-by-17s where critical string dimensions have been provided from both corners of all structures, to property lines, to face of proposed curb and/or edge of pavement, to proposed privacy streaming in the case of the private drive on the east. And I believe we may have also dimensioned in some instances proposed trees, one of their plans that within a perceived close proximity to the property line. So all those dimensions are in red, and they're, again, every, every structure, including the garage structure, you don't have to buy any residences, all of those have been listed with dimensions, so it should be very clear. Happy to answer any questions with regards to that. And for everyone's non-benefit, it's up on the screen in a way that no one can reach. So again, the private drive on the east, the public road on the west. Happy to answer.
One final, Rob?
Sure.
I think you also asked us to look at whether we thought either of those streets could create corner lots for the adjoining lots, so that's addressed as well in our submittal, it's on the last page. But briefly, for the south street side to private road, we're going through the code. Ultimately, any determination on whether that's a corner lot, we don't really have any option for determination, but from our perspective, we don't see anything in the code that would treat those lots as corner lots for a private street, and it would be kind of unusual to create a corner lot based on a private street. It's typically from the public driveway. On the Pennsylvania Avenue side, arguably it would create the corner lots adjacent. There's no definition of a corner lot in the code, but there is a graphic under the general regulations. Twenty-five foot setback from the road, the property to the north, there's nothing within the buildings that's certainly graphic within the setback. For the property to the south on that side, there's a garage that's, I think it's five feet from the property line, there's a lot of that code down. So it would be within the setback, but it would just be a non-corner structure. So provided with that information as well.
Good.
So happy to answer any questions from the board, if not, we'll see you guys. Right, just to, I know the board, you know, we have had these for a few days, but I'm sure you haven't had a chance to review them in great detail. I will point out that there, at the very end of the materials, are the questions that were more of the sort of non-technical questions that were asked by the board, and answers are provided. Answers are provided there. Matt, could you just quickly let people know how the, how the situation is?
Regarding materials, everything except for the, essentially this packet which was received earlier this week has been put online on the Planning Board page of the Village website. As of tomorrow, this will be uploaded as well, now that this presentation has been put forward, and as well as the resolution that will be addressed later on in this evening's board meeting. So every decision that's been made to, by the board up to this point is currently on the Village website, and the business that's being done tonight will be up tomorrow, latest Monday, but I'm aiming for tomorrow by 1:00 p.m. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Lance, can I put you on the spot a little bit? So what is your overall quick impression of the responses we've gotten from the applicant to the points that MRB made?
A spot to get it or not, but at this point, I haven't had a good chance to go through all the comments, but in talking with the design team when we issued those comments, it seemed to me that they were trying to address as many of them as they could as part of the preliminary submission. Earlier today, they went over a lot of the detail that they added to the plans. Just to be clear, the MRB letter, as I mentioned in the last meeting, was all inclusive in the sense that we included final comments in that letter. Things that really aren't expected of them at this point to be addressed, just so that we had a full, an open book as to what was forthcoming later on. Some of that detail is what I'm trying to work through now is to determine at a minimum what is necessary for this board preliminary process and what we can push off as part of final. The drainage components, obviously we want as much of that as we can upfront so that we know that we're going to meet the standards set forth by the Village and by DUC. That information will be an ongoing process. It doesn't just solve as part of preliminary, but we have a good standing as to where we are with it and that they're going to be code compliant as part of that process. And then the calculations get fine-tuned as we go through it. Maybe take that in here or we take it further away later on as we go through that process. The landscaping, as mentioned, you know, it's an overview right now, but that gets fine-tuned as we go through the review process as well. The important items like the engineering aspects, the water and sewer, all that stuff gets addressed up and down. We need to know, make sure that whatever total units they're proposing, that makes sense for capacity reasons that we can serve those items. And so that's the data that we're looking at right now. We're trying to ensure that that information that they're providing makes sense for the project that they have. So as part of this process, as we continue to move forward, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the revised plans that we received, the revised port that we received, which is very standard approach, go through it again, provide comments back to this board, hopefully less than 123 comments than before, and reduce it so that it's much more, if you can get your minds around 50 comments as opposed to 123 comments. Those comments, I would like to be able to present to you as part of our team at the next meeting, and so that when the public has their public forum for the board, we are here to be answered and address any comments that they may have, both under revision, that were provided by the applicant, their team, and the comments that we offered as part of that review. That's basically where we are.
Okay, a couple of quick questions for you. So in the, in the response from the applicant, there are probably half a dozen items that are flagged for requiring planning board input before there's any further response. I just want to make sure that those don't get lost in shuffle and that we have, are you planning to sort of, you know, keep a checklist of those items too? And I guess the other concern from my standpoint would be getting a strong sense of what the priority items are and what the best, you know, sense of timing would be from our standpoint so that we can get those things on the table soon if they need to be decided soon, or whether, you know, that's the kind of thing that would wait for a later stage. But that would be extremely helpful to, as I recall, the items that were singled out for board input all were, you know, fairly high-profile issues that we're going to need to take up. I just, like I said, I want to make sure that we do those in a timely way and that we don't leave any out.
One of the comments that we offered for the board's consideration, and I think a big component to the project, that most certainly will have to be addressed as part of the seeker process, so your input on that sooner than later is as important as the road location. Right now, it's composed between two residential properties. The alternative to that is a location further north. I think we've seen both options presented to this board, one is an earlier version and then revised to the more current location. Both locations can work, engineering-wise, it can be feasible in both locations. It both offers certain impacts, both positive and negative, to the area. I would suggest that the board look into that and see which location being that's mine, extending the board's open to two entrances and exits out of the parcel site, that we collaborate, determine the best location for that based on the positives and the negatives of the site. That would have to be done prior to seeker being determined because that impact is an impact that we have to resolve as part of that process. I believe another item was...
Lance, just briefly, now, could we, could we start through, would it make sense to start through the seeker process first before we need to absolutely pin that down? I mean, I'm sort of thinking, you know, the seeker, you know, template questionnaire is extensive, and there's a lot of things in there that you can get through that aren't being questioned by the location. So, you know, is it sensible to start that review process even without a decision on that?
Yes, but I mean, in most of the procedures that I've dealt with, once, you know, for example, next board meeting, we'll have a public hearing. You're going to get comments, you're going to get nitwit. I don't necessarily anticipate us doing the seeker determination at that one time because you're going to be, for the first time, acknowledging comments from MRB group and want to have those answers. I ain't even a chance to understand that before you make your determination on the significance of the environment effect this project has. What I do anticipate is that when that time comes, whether it's the inaugural meeting or the meeting thereafter, that we're going to do it all at that meeting. It's going to go step by step until we get through it so that you can make your determination on all those potential impacts. Therefore, a decision on the road is probably a good idea to start thinking about that and asking those questions now of both the applicant and us to maybe help resolve that potential issue. Because that is something that once we start the process, honestly, we started the process. We were already in the seeker process. The next step is to make a determination of it based on the input that you receive both from your team, the design team, even outside agencies that respond.
I'm just sort of thinking of it in terms of, you know, a lot of times when we're making a decision on one thing, there's other issues involved and there's sort of, you know, some intermingling of issues and you say, okay, we're going to, we'll move in that direction on this one, but in light of that, we're going to move on in this direction on the other one. So I can, I can see this not being this beautiful, pristine, you know, decision that then, you know, allows us to consider everything else, you know, sort of all by itself. I mean, there's going to be give and take on some of these issues. So that, that's a sort of, I'm kind of worried about setting up a dynamic that doesn't allow that give and take to take place.
No, and you're correct. You know, once you make your seeker determination, it doesn't mean that the plans themselves won't have some changes to them. That's part of the planning board's process is to go through and fine-tune and continue to massage the plan so that the mitigation measures are at our act but based on the input that you've received. However, we as part of seeker want to make sure that the plans don't have a substantial change to them. Something that we didn't agree upon is part of, you know, if we make a determination on this location and then after we do seeker, you come back to later on, now that potential mitigation measure that we all agreed upon as part of the seeker now changes because the impact has changed. So that would require us to go back to seeker and re-resolve that issue, a potential issue. So you're correct that this is an ongoing process, but the footprints that you see on the plans, the big-ticket items, and their current locations for the most part, once we get through seeker, that's ultimately where they're going to be. We'll tweak the mitigation measures, the drainage, the landscaping, the storm sewer alignment, the waterline, those things along the way, sidewalks, but the location of the buildings, the number of buildings, the driveway entrances, those things typically don't hold once we start, once we complete it, I should say.
So, Rick, I'm going to just point out that moving, changing the road location isn't quite a simple matter of either or because it does impact on all the rest of the distribution of buildings and stuff.
Yeah, so I mean, exactly. It's not an easy decision, and I understand that. That's why I think the questions that you have on that should be asked of us and asked of the applicant's team to help answer those, to provide to those issues that may better support your decision. Because technically, they could put it in both locations. They have the room to do so. They will provide the mitigation measures that they feel are adequate to mitigate that potential, excuse me, potential impact to that area. It's just a matter of, being that, to my understanding, the board wants to connections, we need to determine the best locations, and that is through your review as to what makes the most sense. And I don't know what your concerns are, so I can't address them yet. So once I know what they are, I might be to answer those questions or the applicant's team may be to answer those questions. But that's the conversation that, it's not meant for you guys just to take it and then resolve it on your own and come back and say, this is the answer. Though that could work, I think it's better that you can have the bouncing back and forth with us so that we can better assist you in that process.
Does it make sense to get that...
I think it's fine to have those conversations tonight. That's your prerogative.
Worth asking those questions.
On some of these ticket items.
One obvious question is, I'll put the team on the spot a little bit, but, so, let's say we decide that we want to go back to plan. Let's say we want to go back to plan, the original plan with the entrance located in the northeast end of the property. How much of an impact is that going to have on the rest of what's been presented here? And what kind of a timeframe would we be talking about to sort of make the revisions that would be necessary to do that?
Thank you. I'm a lawyer, so I'm just kidding. So I think the team has already successfully laid it out, so we're not talking significant work. I say that with opportunity and ease, you know, have to do a lot of engineering work, but the concept is already on the table. We came in with different options back then. So I think it would be very helpful to start to ask those questions, but I think it's also helpful to have a formal public hearing so you can hear from the public on those issues as well. And what we were sort of understanding where things were going, Lance and the engineering team have done their first cut and we've done our first response. He's actually going to do a second cut, providing additional lists, have a public hearing, go get input. That road is just one of several issues that I think are open that the board is going to have to make some decisions on. We would sort of anticipate, I think it was Anna last month who had suggested a workshop where the board get together, that may make a lot of sense after the public hearing. You kind of have some dialogue, your experts come, we come to the workshop, those ones that we're with the public, typically learn about what's coming, but a dialogue back and forth where we really drill into some of those details. We would then envision, I think, with revised plans and then hopefully you're in a position where all of the significant issues that were on the table, those things where moving parks are discussed, that Lance mentions, really should be fairly set before we make the seeker determination, you'd be at that point where you could make that determination. And that's just going to be a step-by-step process. It's going to be...
Does the public comment period start at time of offer?
So there's a, there's typically under state law, I'm not sure if it's a new code, a 62-day window from the time you close a public hearing that can be mutually extended. As we've talked about, I think as we've done, we will extend your deadlines as necessary. We're not looking to rush a decision on your part. We understand that there is a lengthy, complicated, detailed process that needs to occur on this day. So I'm not looking at my client when I say, we're going to give you all the time you need and we're going to make sure you have all the answers you want.
Do we need that, like, in writing?
I'm sure, I'm sure the attorneys could work that out pretty easily. You also don't have to necessarily close the public hearing, but we don't typically recommend that because then you have a public hearing that we need, and that's never...
If I may, the board remembers that you had, you kept the public hearing open for the Camp Street subdivision, so that option is available.
During the Camp Street subdivision process, the board chose to extend that public hearing from one meeting to the next, so that period was kept open, so that is an option for the board. It's not something that there is a limit to, it's like saying, I can look that up and report back to the board, but that option is available. You had to utilize that in a past meeting.
And I'm sure it's going to correct me, but there's also a rule that until seeker's done, the application isn't ready for a decision, so 62 days actually doesn't apply. It was case law. So it sounds like we'll have ample time and no pressure. So that's good. We like that.
But did you want to, you look now like you have other comments, but I'm wondering if you wanted to sort of start our planning board brain thinking about the road? Do you want to discuss some things that we're thinking of right now, what we might go moving forward, or do you have something else to try to stay?
I think right now, if you have questions in your mind related to the road to South Street, entrance exit to South Street, while we have, you know, people here who can answer questions that you might have, that's fine. I don't think we need to, you know, discuss it other than to make sure we've got the data that we need to start working on that decision.
It does have a question. So it sounds like the proposed, what we're seeing today in the updated site plan, the South Street entrance is viable. So it doesn't infringe on some of those things we were concerned about with sidewalks and property boundaries and all that, though this notion of private road means then it's maintained by INHS but has public access because people can use it, there's no sign. And so then, and it does not, though, connect to a sidewalk, right? So the original road now is connected to the sidewalk, right? That's the top northern part. The top part is now a sidewalk access near Camp Street, right?
But there is a sidewalk in that.
And it goes as far as this proposed South Street road?
Hundred percent.
Does it go all that far? Thank you.
It will be complete. That stretch is to be completed in the spring.
Under the grant that we got to do the original project? Okay.
Some additional funds, but should this project be passed and whatever build out would be, there would be a sidewalk down to where that road is proposed.
Okay, great. That was significant. Yeah, Joe.
Add something. So the sidewalk that stands private drive is ADA accessible, which is a benefit of having it there. Because there's significant grade change going up to the north, that is a pocket of pathway, like a woodchip pathway, that would be much more difficult to be ADA accessible. So we tried to have, this plan has both ways.
So can you just explain to me again, I mean, technically, it's not a corner lot because it's a private drive, but it's a corner lot. So who needs to, our zoning code officer, do you still determine that?
So any decisions on, the rules of your code are made by your zoning officer, that's the person the Board of Trustees is charged with making those decisions. But private drives run past other properties all the time, it does not create a inside setbacks, it does not in a corner lot under the project, at least from our perspective. But again, we're not the ones to make that decision.
But I also think it can be pointed out on this plan where the corner is under proposed lot and where that is versus the houses that are existing, and whether it's a corner lot that's created as part of one of the properties of the existing houses, or is that corner created in the property that the development team owns? And is that corner with a lot that is theirs versus a lot that is currently front? And I think that can easily be pointed out, and that's something worth explaining on the applicant's side, because this is an issue that's been sticking that way I look at right now isn't an issue.
So I think what Matt is saying is, you know, is the corner lot, you know, on this side or is the corner lot on this side? I think at the end of the day, it really comes down to what is the screening opportunities available for the private drive as it relates to the neighboring apartments? Whether you view it as a corner lot, the corner lot really just includes setbacks for structures and then specifically buildings, not, say, roads or fences or things like that.
Well, but I mean, the determination, if it is...
Well, but, I mean, the determination, if it is a corner, doesn't that, that text, it wouldn't be allowed because the building on the south end?
So, anytime a change in circumstance creates a nonperformance with the code, it simply becomes a nonperformance structure. And your zoning code actually has a section on nonperformance structures and how all that works. But it does not, so I think there was a concern expressed maybe three or four meetings ago that people are going to have to move out of that house. Yeah, that's not how, that's not a zoning law.
She said it right there.
Yeah. A formal determination needs some...
Do you want to commit and understand how the part of the code works?
I would like for you, who else, to determine just what's the problem? Is that corner lot, is the private drive, like, is that legal? Is that allowed? Because I have big concerns. I feel like that's just so close to that existing house.
Yeah.
And I typically, I just think that that's a really bad idea.
Sure. That's the whole part of this process.
Right.
John, do you have a question?
This is more of a technical question, going back to the engineering. Actually, this drawing here where we have this, this settlement or detention on, that looks pretty deep. Is that going to require fencing around it?
No. These uses are known permanent pools and are four foot deep and no permanent fencing required. Okay, these are our decisions.
Okay. Just one question. The other, I know in the comments, MRB comments, at the last meeting, one thing that was expressed, and I'd like to respond to, was the issue of a desire to make the buildings have uniform setbacks. Yeah. And I would prefer to let the landscape architects determine that, since it's really an aesthetic question. And, very much, those are my questions.
Those are the questions that I have offered the board.
I have another question. So, you're saying that, once the seeker process begins, that plan is kind of, it's not set in stone, there's still tweaking that we're going to do, but for the most part, like, the broad idea is going to stay the same?
Right. So, you said before the determination is significant, so on, kind of, not, again, the whole part of, the whole point of the process is to look at the design, to determine whether there are setbacks that need to be made, and you come to us and say, "We think this is an issue we need to address," and we address it, and there are changes. It just happened before you end the process. So, you're already, you're already started the process, but you're very new to this.
But, I mean, you were saying that potentially, next month, April, we could be going through that checklist and determining, you know, the actual, doing the seeker and determining next.
Directly, once you declare yourselves lead agency, you have the ability, if you thought there was enough evidence there to before, you could begin that process and end it today. But based on the information that we involved, we're not suggesting to do that. We're just clearly stating that, at this point, we've provided more than enough time for all those other agencies to comment back on whether or not they felt that this board made the most sense to make that determination when that time comes. And they've all had 60 days, which is above a 30-day department, to do so, and not one of them objected to that. So, if we continue with the process, the next step would be declare yourself lead agency, so that when the time comes, when you feel that time has come to begin that and end that seeker determination, then we can do that. And that will take place in a meeting where we go through step-by-step all the comments and impacts of part of, the part two. Our job right now is, through this review, through the review that we've been going through, through the MRB comments, is to try to identify some of those impacts and try to mitigate them now, so that when it comes time to do that decision, that we've all agreed that, "Okay, stormwater, roads, an impact is being mitigated because they're going to be complying with DZ regulations. They're complying with villagers' regulations. They have to get a permit from DZ." I'm just giving you an example. But that's, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to take those big impacts that we all are staring this in the face, and try to find a way to solve, to soften those and mitigate them through plan change now, so that once seeker is done, there isn't any significant changes to the plans. So that we have an idea that makes sense for us to continue to go forward and fine-tune little things here and there, so that we can grab the approval from that one.
And also then, site plan review. So, we're doing an environmental assessment of the impact. We're not saying, "Oh, that's great. Let's just put that tree there because you're approved." Just note that I'm talking to all of the audience as well.
No, but is that...
Because it starts to sound super scary.
Sure, sure.
Right? Determination, right.
And they're big decisions, but it's standard procedure. I mean, you begin seeker with an idea, you send it through the gauntlet, you get all the impacts and all the discussion angles back to you, so that you have a package that makes sense.
That says, "If this becomes approved during site plan review, you will not create a floodplain in any direction."
You're using us to help, you know, you started with a list this big, you're going to get it down to this big, and hopefully then we can decide on how those impacts are either large or small, depending upon the mitigation that has been provided.
But during site plan review, like, that's essentially going to stay the same?
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, if, let's say today we decided to say, "This site plan is shown, we went through the part two, and we said there is no significant adverse impacts in the environment."
I think this is all, you know, like, everything needs to be changed, you know? These buildings are all in the wrong place. That, that cannot happen during site plan review. Like, that, would, that conversation would need to happen now?
Yes. So, normally, we would expect that conversation to happen now, but we understand this is a pretty big project, and the planning board has not done a lot of big projects. So, it may make some sense to take it one step and kind of focus on seeker first. If you got through seeker, and we're in site plan review, and you were to say, "We need to move all the buildings," we would have a discussion about that, and you agree this was strong, and the board feels strongly, then we're going to move some buildings. We're going to have to go back and fix seeker to be certain, create impacts that weren't addressed. It would be unusual, but I'd try more than usual. So, again, it's a process, and it's really just about going step-by-step, making sure you're a little bit in your step away, which really has a...
I, I mean, I do have some concerns about the layout and the buildings. And I just don't want it to necessarily be set in stone simply because the process is kind of getting so far along.
Sure. I think it will be really helpful if we go back to have the public hearing, get that input, have a workshop, and I think the board has some discussion to have about issues, and really delve into those details so that you can see, if you've got some concerns, if other boards have them or not. And then we'll kind of see what percolates up and needs to be addressed further, whether it's redesign or those kinds of issues. But, hopefully, by the time we get through that, the issue is addressed, but it's really going to be a process, so...
Yeah, and I think the, you know, the seeker process, one of the, one of the things is directed as mitigating concerns, so that it's not just, you know, you have a concern and that stops the project. It's a, you know, you have a concern, and how can we address it? What are the best plans to address, you know, the meat of the concern? So, that, you know, that'll happen, and then we'll have other opportunities too, because this is not just an application to assess the environmental impact. This is an application to create a subdivision and build a complex and fairly large development. So, and we've got stages in there that we can, you know, that we can have input at. That said, I do think the sooner the better. And we need to get these things out there, big picture items that need to be, you know, dealt with, and now's the time. And I think in the next couple of months, we're going to have lots of chances for that. All right. Are there further questions for the applicant, for Lance, for... Okay. Thank you very much, and thanks for your time, Lance, you know, getting this all taken care of, and distributed, and all of that, and thanks to the applicant who will be the sponsor. As Matt said, these materials are online and available at Village Office if you want to take them, get a hard copy.
Do you want to do the basic question?
So, my question actually pertains to the trees in the canopy, right? So, the recognition that the ones that were counted are obviously mature. So, what amount, I'm curious to see, you don't have to answer that now, but what amount of what age trees would be planted to make that a key, a total addition that you're having, right? Whether you know that or not, if you know that now, that's cool. Or I can just get that response some other way.
Can you give your public answer? The trees that were surveyed and quantified as to be, the existing trees to be retained and/or removed are all eight inches or greater in caliber. Species vary, obviously, some species grow faster than others, and thus...
It's like 30 years?
Sorry, you're asking me for an average age of an existing tree to be removed?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to see, like, the big, the big picture is a pretty one, right? Like, what age are these trees? And would they be planted at this size, or, you know what I mean?
I would, if you remiss, there's a couple of questions there. So, I would, first, I would be remiss to give you an average age of trees, of the existing trees, but I think that we could give you additional information about that. Many of them are successional, and perhaps of procedures being lower value, but nonetheless, a big tree is a big tree.
Right, right.
We're not in the business of... The, there is a stipulation in the landscape requirement of the rights that state, and I'll confirm this, that the two inch, two and a half inch caliber tree is a minimum required tree to be put back. So, as a point of reference, that picture that you held up of the normal lawn?
Yes. Yeah.
Can I look at it to make sure I'm not falsifying? Yeah, the ones on the, in the image on the right hand side of the page are approximately two and a half, three inch caliber trees.
Those seem great.
It's not insignificant. Most trees that you see going in this region are probably closer to like a lawn, one and a half, they're much smaller. Depending on the species, a two and a half inch caliber tree can have something, I've heard of a 20-foot canopy, you know, when it goes in, it's a healthy, good-sized tree. Give it three to five years, and it's impactful. So, when you multiply that times like in 317, or 27, it's, it's, it's not a small investment. It would transform the aesthetics of the, what was largely, you know, been out of, you know, open field condition, almost, I want to say instantly, but quickly.
Okay. Great thinking. On that note, I'm assuming that most of those, is okay? I'm going to say it anyway. I'm assuming that most of those 64 trees are in that upper lot where there's the other road and freeway is being considered?
To help you make that assessment?
Well, I mean, I'm just, if they were, if you were to put in that road on the upper lot instead, I'm assuming that a lot of those 64 trees would be taken down, and they're big, mature trees. So, I'm assuming also that they'd probably mostly be replanted, if you're already going to be replanting and planting additional trees. Just clarifying that.
I hesitate to speak in generalizations, but yes, there is a significant stand of mature existing trees in the northeast corner of the site. It is by far the most heavily vegetated dense forested area of the site. And, you know, you could rate the, to honor it in that as well. It would be probably one of the more noticeable transformations of the existing landscape, should the road be located in that alignment. That being said, yes, we're going to plan a significant amount of trees if we, for numerous reasons, aesthetics being just one of them, we could replant heavily in that area, to the extent that we need to disturb and remove existing vegetation, should a road be in that location.
I mean, I can...
Okay. So, the next item is to consider the declaration of ourselves as the lead agency. Matt, do you want to give us a little intro on that?
This resolution was prepared by the village attorney and staff. We had both an introduction by Lance and by Adamus, but what the agency means in terms of our board serving as such, that the agency is interested or involved that have been featured out to have responded, said we have an issue with the village attorney board for planning board serving as lead agency. So, where we have taken one vote several meetings back to declare and tend to become lead agency, then we voted to continue that resolution, we now find ourselves at tonight's vote to, based upon the response from outside entities that are interested and involved, to, I say finally, declare ourselves lead agency or not. So, if you've read through, and this was circulated on Monday, the resolution as written, we will be taking a vote, as well as looking to set a date for our public hearing, most likely next month, with planning board meeting for the week of April. And that is the motion before you. If you'd like the declaration read aloud, that can be done. If not, you may read, and then we will motion a vote.
Okay, it's been circulated. I just want to add one thing. In addition to the fact that nobody has said that we shouldn't be the lead agency here, the normal process is for the agency that is deciding on an application, making the decisions about that, the normal approach is for that agency to serve as the lead agency. So, we'd be doing exactly what, you know, is not required, but is normally what happens in these sorts of situations. So, is there a motion to approve the resolution that was circulated earlier this week? Well, we can have discussion after a motion, if you want to do it that way, or is this...
Well, it, I apologize about the dents, but I just, is there any way that this could get like a timeline? I know that if, you know, we can vote to extend the public hearing, but just kind of, could you give us an overview of the timeline and the steps if we become lead agency? What, like, just what exactly happens after that? Could you give us the steps?
We're in reverse, if you want to talk about the final vote, it may be a second answer, and that will bring back the front.
So, in terms of steps, that's where you're asking?
A little later.
Yep, in terms of steps. So, tonight, by declaring yourselves the lead agency, it basically is just stating that you're the board to make the ultimate decision on the environmental impacts of this project. That part we covered. The next step that the board is going to make, the board has, would then be to continue your review of the application that's been provided, and to continue to solicit comments from your, your village consulting firm, and make sure that you get those comments to help you make your decision when the time comes. Continue to have the dialogue, both with the applicant team, to make sure that your comments are being adequately addressed, so that when that time comes, to make a decision. And then continue to do a review of the input that you've received as part of the seeker process from the outside agencies. So, tonight being you declare yourselves the agency begins the process in the sense that you're now eligible to make a determination of significance on the project when it comes time. That time, there is no time. The time is when you feel it's necessary for you to make it, when you have the input that is necessary for you to make that decision. Our metrological stuff, based on what we've all been talking about, would be the public hearing is set for April, public comments are received, that input is received, and then we continue the application to the main meeting, so that, one, in the main meeting, you now have an MRB comment letter under revised plans, which I'm prepared to give to you prior to your April meeting. to you prior to your April meeting. You'll have additional outside comments from any agencies that haven't responded or have further information to offer you. You're going to have the opportunity to provide more comments in response to tonight's presentation by the applicant so that you can provide comments back to them, further review and comments back to you guys. Ultimately, then you're going to have the public input. After the April meeting, in the main meeting, you're now going to have, hopefully, dialogue both from the applicant and our and MRB group and our staff to further assist you with making that decision. I'm anticipating to bring the traffic consulting engineer into next meeting so that public comments and the answers that dial can take place, the drainage consultant, I shouldn't say consultant, a team member of mine to come in so that he can help address or answer any comments specifically to drainage. It's my understanding the applicant team is doing something similar, though they've come fully prepared every meeting, they'll also have maybe their traffic consultant here as well, so that the April meeting, when we have the public input, you'll have the chance to comment and ask direct questions to both their team and our team and get those answers, which you're capable and have option to do in any meeting. After the April meeting, depending upon whatever takes place at that meeting, I don't expect us to make any decisions at the April meeting. I'm expecting that decision to continue to May. And then May would be where I would anticipate us having a better idea as to those large impacts, potentially large impacts, so that we're in a position, if necessary in May, to start that discussion on the secret part two and three, which is a practice that the state has provided us so that we can go through step by steps on helping us to determine what those impacts are on land, water, environment, air, et cetera. So what I would anticipate is maybe at the April meeting, I can provide two guys with the part twos and part threes, they'll be blank, they'll be an opportunity for you guys to review them and ask the questions that you may have on either at the April meeting or via email through Matt so that I can respond back to them, either via email or at May meeting, when we get closer to the decision-making period. I only say that because ultimately, this board has full control as to when those decisions are rendered. If you're not ready to make those decisions, continue to do that so long. And I did misspeak earlier, I apologize for that. Adamus correct. When I say when we finish secret, it doesn't mean that that is ultimately going to be the buildings. It's anticipated that that's the direction that we're going. That's the goal, so that we don't have to come back to secret or we have the ability to make any modifications throughout the entire process.
Thank you.
Okay, would someone like to move that we adopt the resolution that was circulated earlier this week and then I hope you have a chance to review?
I would so move, I'm assuming that these blanks will be filled in.
Yes.
Okay, this is a resolution, right, the second half of the resolution has to do with the public hearing. So why don't we, why don't we consider the lead agency aspects of this and then we will also consider when we want to schedule the public hearing as a part of that. So the first motion would have to do with whether we are the, going to declare ourselves the lead agency.
That was just a motion.
Okay, so John, you moved that?
I thought I...
My motion, my motion.
Oh, Jessica did, okay. Just a second, John's second. Okay. Is there any further discussion of the issue of whether we should declare ourselves the lead agency?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, it passes. All right, so the second motion will have to do with scheduling of a public hearing as described in items three, four, five, six, and seven. So is the idea here that we would schedule, schedule a public hearing then for the April meeting?
That is correct.
Okay. So that would be what the, would be at seven o'clock. At our next regular board meeting, we would just schedule a public hearing.
April 26th.
April 26th.
At the school.
Here. Yeah, I anticipate that we will leave, you know, the space, even though the audience tonight is very thin, I'm guessing that we're having an actual formal public hearing will be more... So we will do it here. Are there any other issues that need to be just ironed out before we... Okay, is there a motion to that effect? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, it passes. All right. Okay, now we are to our public comment session. And I will just ask people to come to the microphone and state what they have to say and reminders to, you know, try to keep it civil, if you have reactions, try to hold any of them so that people feel comfortable getting up in front of the audience here and saying what they think. Last time, you know, we had several people go up and decided to just kneel to us, their data, portions of the ordinance. I want, I don't, I obviously can't tell you not to do that, but that's, you know, we can, we know the ordinance and, you know, you can have a kneel to us quite always at times. So if that's what your plan is, I encourage you not to do it. But if you have, you know, substantive comments, things, facts, data, things that we can use in our decision-making process, that's what we're after. We're doing this discretionarily for that purpose. And so keep that in mind too, if you have things to say. Okay.
Hello, I'm Kathy Wilson, I live at 52 South Street. You have the power and you're going to have to put on your superhero capes. You're going to have to put on your superhero capes and tell them where the street can be. They are not going to bother terror. Please, the darkness, slap.
Hello, I'm Jack Cass, 13 South Street, is this audible?
Closer, closer.
Oh, okay, is this better?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I was going to start off with asking, who monitors the construction when it occurs? We have one very able COVID enforcement officer here, the fire code officer, and does the village have to hire several or, except provided for by the engineering company to watch the, you know, exact events because these standards fall fairly close to hours? But that was just number one. I'd also like to know who owns Lot 12, which has either three and four years on it? And the copy of this packet that you received will that be made public? Okay? The public hearing for next, scheduled for next month is for what stage of the process? Also, do you need a completed application in order to have a public hearing? And one other thing, the public hearing starts the clock in some sort of fashion, I do believe, although the developers have said that they are willing to, you know, adjust whatever timeline it is, it would be nice if that was in writing and just to have it formally in the records. And just another thing, one of the roads is that, the turning radius for any number one or two truck in either Pennsylvania Avenue or South Street does not comply with any of the ASHTO recommendations, which is sort of the bible of how standing design for highways, roads, and traffic is.
Okay, we won't try to answer those questions tonight, but I would urge you to follow up with Matt in terms of...
Well, I would like that if the questions were answered.
Yeah.
Okay. Because in the past, you know, always...
Sometimes, you know, we can answer questions. Sometimes, I mean, basically, what we're doing here is we're, we're taking into account the information you're giving.
Correct. No, I just would like to have an answer, and somewhat tie with that, if that's not too much to ask. Thank you.
Hi, now that we can, 214 Pennsylvania. First, want to thank you guys for providing this opportunity to us. Second, I guess, overall, now that we're getting into it, I would hope that you would use extreme caution on this project, as the first project in this kind of a process for us as a village. And keep it at a minimum, try to, try to interpret, if there is interpretation involved, protect the interest of folks already living here and take that as, well, it's just my advice. I have a bunch of questions, not that many, but, and I don't expect me to answer them here today or in the candidate. I was just curious about traffic report, does it consider just traffic flow or does it consider where on the roads in the village, especially during construction periods, with the heavy equipment and trucks traveling frequently by? The developers or the village's responsibility to fix any drainage or flooding, drainage or flooding problems that may exist as a result of this construction that seems to be taking place over a brief appeal of time? I was curious, is the preschool bike a lot in this development and are they paying for their building? I do not know the answer to that. Okay, now we're wanting to see through the process. Wondering how deep the retention funds are when they require fences, maybe I'll answer that. Shouldn't we do that? And has, I'm still not quite sure when the evaluation of this project against the zoning code takes place. Is it already done or is it still to be done? Perhaps? Is that possible answer now? If not, I'll ask questions on to Matt.
Well, we have to evaluate it against the zoning ordinance. Right now, we're gathering...
Okay, all right. I'm still a little confused about the process and when secret starts and when zoning starts and all that stuff. So I don't think you would view this project as the first very strictly so it doesn't set a precedent for whatever future developments because I was a little disturbed, a couple of meetings ago, I think it was, when there was a conversation about that roadway at 52 Private Drive, or whatever you want to call it, that said, well, you know, forty-eight feet's close enough for fifty, you know? I don't think close enough is good enough when it comes, comes to laws. I think that we should be pretty strict with that because it seems to me that if forty-eight feet or whatever is needed for this variance is good for this person, then maybe forty-six feet has to be good enough for the next person. So, thank you.
Congratulations. I got my eyes on it. Expect you to. The traffic report, will that be made available, can we do that? Okay. The economic impact report, is that something that will also be available with status on that?
Just the plan, I'll speak to that after this point of business.
Okay. And then finally, a lighting assessment, I brought that up at the December meeting and we would all like to know what the plans for lighting is about now.
The latest information packet actually makes that much clearer. The analysis firm has, you know, pointed out that it was all about much clearer.
We don't know anything, though. You made it.
No, in the new materials that are now available.
Right, right. Are you that, you reviewed them?
I haven't looked at them yet, but now, that issue is...
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Lane Connor, 40 South Street. Again, thank you for having us have these comments. I wasn't sure if MRB received information from the public to review as part of their review process. I've been writing letters since May of 2017 and I've kind of gotten response back, get on many of them. At first, it was the village attorney was going to review. I don't know if the village attorney has reviewed my letter since May, so I'm curious to know, just yes, no, have you reviewed it? No money in response, I haven't seen one. My last letter, I think, was in February, was very clearly, in my opinion and view, I'm not an attorney, was very black and white about what can and can't go and that roadway does not meet the requirements of the current village regulations, whether it's right next to my property or whether it's right next to Kathy's property, it should be known to be the one of them. And so why would we keep going down the road, if you all, for lack of a better term? When we had an address with black and white in our regulations, I took our village regulations, I cut basically into my letter, it's very clear, either I'm crazy or to say so, or give the village a response, one or another, we all have been wanting to hear. I think it's fair for the village, after ten months of waiting, to get some sort of response about may like it or not like it, I'd like to get a response. So thank you, and hopefully MRB can respond. They did not respond to things that I, my letter, so I don't think they've seen my letter or, so it would be nice to have them as someone that's representing you to at least comment on that. So thank you.
Hello, Nancy Young, South Street Extension. I just want to put something out to you, please, to consider. As you think about this project, I would really like to ask you as all as individuals, if you bought your house and you think that your house is nice and secure and has pretty property on either side, and I'm not talking about behind you, but how would each of you feel if you worked for five years to have construction vehicles, big, heavy trucks, going right past your bedroom as you're proposing to do to Kathy? How would you feel if at 6:30, 7:00 in the morning, you have all the possible school traffic going back and forth right near your bedroom? Please take those things into consideration as you hear and decide what you're going to do in this situation. Five years of construction, heavy trucks, early morning, late afternoon traffic by your next of being house, also, traffic going in and out, that's less of a concern to me than five years of construction and the noises of construction. Please take those into account for your own houses. Pretend, go outside, just pretend that nine feet, nine inches, which isn't very far, go stand in your bedroom and imagine that you're getting big trucks going by there many times a day. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, so the next item is old business and I'm going to ask Matt to bring us up to date on the physical and services analysis.
I'll just do it from here. So the last trustees meeting, the contract with Koin Associates was signed by the mayor. I have a copy of it here, if you'd like to take a look at it. I did not circulate that by emailing the contract, that's here for your review. And the physical impact analysis is started. There's just a question from an audience member. It is deemed to be complete in eight weeks' time. The plan currently is to have that to... The plan currently is to have that, to have a presentation made to the planning board at the May meeting. The consultant will come out from Saratoga Springs and present that evening. How this fiscal analysis is rolling out is that the consultant is collecting data, operations, maintenance, fiscal budgetary data from all village department heads, also from the applicant, from the school district, whose property we're in tonight, as well as any of the department heads from the town, the Ulysses, that share any services with the village. They're doing these interviews both by phone and in person if necessary, though we think posted it can be done by phone. And then they will be presenting that report, as I said, here in May, and a copy of that will be delivered at that time and will be posted online for the request.
Thank you. Do you have their old business? Do you have new business? Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, a motion and a second, discussion of that. All in favor? Close? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.